We, P and Z, we spent at least seven months on the redevelopment. You know, whichever direction it is, dazing it, that's true.
Hi, James.
I mean, Pollard, I think they're ready to start. Oops, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shenandoah City Council meeting for September 27th, 2023. Look around, I see that we, everyone except Councilman Raymaker is here on an excuse absence. We're gonna stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would like to remain standing, we're gonna have a, an invocation as well.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Tonight's invocation is gonna be delivered by Councilman Fletcher.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you in your precious name, Jesus name, Lord, and we thank you for this opportunity that you've given us to serve our community. Father, we ask for your wisdom, your guidance tonight, Lord, to be able to make decisions that will honor you first, Lord, and honor our residents and our community and neighbors. God, we thank you for our first responders. We ask that you would watch over them, that you would bless them. We thank you for our staff and all the hard work and effort that they make each and every day to move the city forward and to serve our residents. But most of all, Lord, we thank you for your son, Jesus, and the opportunity that we have to be able to pray in honor of you. We ask these things, in your precious son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item number five, Citizens Forum. We don't have anyone registered to speak?
No, sir.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number six, Presentation of the Monthly Capital Project Report. Presentation only.
Normally, Councilman Raymaker would handle that, but I can, see if I can find it here, I can give you a few quick updates. So these are for the projects that are funded primarily by MDD, but there's some also other ones funded by Water Sewer and General Fund. I'll hit the, I'll hit the heavy hitters here. The David Memorial Extension is well on its way. Bryce Construction is out there getting things leveled out, bringing fill dirt, and they are, they're working right now primarily on the section that's inside the city of Shenandoah city limits, but they're moving along and on schedule. The, let's see here. The Vision Park Pond Improvements, if you've driven down Wellman Road and take a look to the north, you can see the rock wall that is under construction right now. I'll admit, I'm very pleased with the way it looks so far. I think once that's finished, it's gonna be a very attractive feature of that park, especially since it's gonna allow a lot more open waters to be there in the bottom in that place that was once just a swamp. But gratefully and unfortunately, we're having rain and it's slowing down the project, but I'm glad for the rain. We'll just add days to the project. But it's moving along really well.
And just, just for the, for the public and for their information, that is what the pond is gonna look like all the way around, is that correct?
So, so we're just doing the tiered walls there in the southeast corner, just because we had such a narrow channel there. If we had done, only done sloping, you would not have had very much open water at the bottom, and it had a opportunity to turn right back into a swamp. The rest of the park, we'll, we will have sloped walls down into it. One of the, the recent changes we made that council approved was constructing a weir at the outfall, which is actually going to raise the holding water level by a couple of feet. It, it's gonna be a very attractive project by the end.
Looking forward to it.
Moving along here through his report. Again, I'll just hit the, the heavy hitters here. On the water and sewer side, the improvements that we have done at the Research Forest Lift Station are complete. We're just left with punch list items. One of those is getting a pump that was unfortunately damaged. A crescent wrench got into it somehow, but the contractor's getting that repaired and, and back to us. Once that's back in place, that project will be complete. And we are scheduling a pre-construction meeting with JTR Constructors for the wastewater treatment plant. And we'll get that, that's a very large two-year project. We'll be starting that once we get the pre-con finished and get a good schedule. And I'll leave my updates to that unless you have any specific questions.
Counsel, any questions?
No, it's good.
Thank you. Okay. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to item number seven, Presentation of Updates on the IDC Revisions.
Counsel, we are in the final stages of proposing to you amendments to the IDC. This is a project that's been going on for a long time. The IDC, as you probably know, has 13 main chapters. The Planning and Zoning Commission has completed its review of all except chapters five and 22, and have asked to do a second review of instances where SUPs are required. Once those three things are finished, then the IDC amendments will be presented to you in their entirety for review. However, in the interim, most recently, Planning and Zoning completed its recommendations with regard to home occupations, which is section 4.2.9. Let me start out by saying, home occupations do not include short-term rentals. That is something different. So we're talking simply here about a home occupation. That review has taken seven months. There has been a high degree of community interest in home occupations. We have had multiple residents attend each of the P and Z meetings, and at one meeting, there were 20 citizens. We've had multiple citizens speak at every single one of the seven meetings where this issue has been addressed. There have been a wide range of opinions. On one end, persons have spoken who have said, I don't want any restrictions. You can do anything on your property that you want to do. And we've had all the way through the middle to the other end, people who have said, I don't want there to be any home business whatsoever. Ultimately, Planning and Zoning decided that the best approach was not to permit or deny specific businesses, but instead to address the issue of home occupation from the perspective of the effect on the community. And in general, it was P and Z's opinion that if the home business does not disturb your neighbor or your community, it probably should be allowed. After the meeting tonight, I will send you and will post on the website the proposed changes to section 4.2.9, and at the next meeting, we'll have an opportunity to review, discuss those potential changes. But I want to highlight just two or three things. Number one, we changed the title from home occupation to home business. P and Z felt like there were four things, that four requirements for an allowed business or profession. One, at least, one of the inhabitants, there must be at least one person that runs a business has got to be an inhabitant of the dwelling. Two, the use should be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential purposes. Three, the use does not change the character of the dwelling. And four, which does not cause a disturbance to the surrounding neighbors or neighborhood. It is important, and P and Z thought it was important, that separately, they stated in the ordinance, residents who use their dwelling to work from a remote location outside of a corporate office, or who only work individually in the home, are not defined as a home business and need not comply with, something I'll talk about, the licensing requirements. So we, Planning and Zoning wanted to make it very plain and very clear. If you work for Exxon and you're working from home two days a week, that's fine. Planning and Zoning put, set forth nine either requirements or restrictions for a home business, which you'll get to see. And the last thing that Planning and Zoning did is they felt like the city should know who is running a home business, and so they wanted a licensing requirement. There's no fee or anything, it's just a registration process. And again, you will, you will get to see their proposals in that regard. What we are going to do moving forward from here is we're gonna go back, probably at each meeting, and review Planning and Zoning's recommended changes to chapters one and two, and then we'll do three and four, five and six. We'll handle them in pieces. That way, the public has plenty of time to see, hear, and understand the changes being recommended, and of course, council will have an opportunity to question those and put in your recommendations. Any questions?
No, I think that's a great approach, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number eight, Discussion and Possible Action to Set the Meeting Date for November and December.
Mayor and Council, as you know, in November, December, we typically reduce the time we meet down to once a month due to Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays. We typically meet on the second Wednesday of the month, and the dates for November, that's November 8th, and in December, that's 13th. We can choose alternate dates if council wants to, but those, those dates are presented are the second Wednesday of both of those months.
So usually, I always come back and recommend that we look at the third Wednesday of the month on those two months, so we can combine both of those meetings into one. Gives staff more opportunity to finish up on a lot of things, and because it is the holiday season, usually the holiday season falls on the fourth week of the month, so it kinda gives us that opportunity again to get everything accomplished that needs to be accomplished as far as city business goes in one meeting. So that will put us the 15th of November and the 20th of December. So I would move that we would look at the alternate dates of November 15th and December 20.
And if I recall, last, last year, we did the third month of November, I think the December, yeah, the third one, that's what we did last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely, definitely in favor of the November one. I think that makes great sense. I just don't, is that 20th getting too close for staff, their vacations, or is that, is everybody good with that? I'll be around.
I don't know what, what staff's vacations look like on the air.
Has this been discussed with staff before this, uh, been on the agenda?
I will be on vacation.
What's that, Troy?
I will be on vacation.
So we have a motion to change the dates to the 15th of November, 20th of December. Do we have a second?
Was that a motion, Ted?
Was that a motion?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I'm a second, so we can keep talking about it.
All right.
Kind of poll the other staff. Lisa and Joseph, you guys, Bill, you guys gonna be around the 20th?
I don't know yet.
This is my local year for holidays.
What's that?
It's my local year for holidays, New Jersey.
You're gonna be here, okay.
This is my year home.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be here.
I just.
Yeah, I think it's our local.
Bill, are you in town?
Yeah.
Bill's in town.
Yeah, I'll be here.
That's enough, we're good.
Are y'all, is Council all in town? You in town, Jim?
I'll be here.
No issue for me.
We're good, man.
No issue for me either.
We're good.
All right, so we have a motion to change the dates to 15th of November and the 20th of December, and seconded by Councilman McLeod. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Item number nine, Preliminary Report in Public Hearing Regarding a Special Use Permit for Medical Services Restricted for 118 Shenandoah Drive Suite Alpha, Shenandoah, Texas.
Mayor and Council, Lone Star Foot and Ankle has requested a special use permit for medical service restricted for the operation of a foot and ankle medical office. This property is located on Shenandoah Park Drive just before entering the neighborhood. The suite has, in the past, acted as a medical office, and Planning and Zoning did review this application at their meetings, and they recommend approval of the special use permit to Lone Star Foot and Ankle.
Thank you. We're gonna open up a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? We're gonna open it up at, I guess, 7:16. Yes, sir?
Counsel, I'm Dr. Armstrong, J.C. Armstrong. I've been in practice for 22 years and leaving my current practice and requesting the use for suite one, suite A 118 Shenandoah Drive. So I appreciate the opportunity to treat the members of Shenandoah as well as Conroe and the Woodlands, which I currently do, up the street at the Foot and Ankle Centers in North Houston. I'm a Woodlands practice, and so I'd just be moving down the street.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your consideration, appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? We're gonna close public hearing at 7:17. We're gonna move on to item number 10, Discussion on Possible Action to Adopt the Following Ordinance. In ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, granting a special use permit for medical services restricted for Lone Star Foot and Ankle located at 118 Shenandoah Drive, Suite A, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violations thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the ordinance as presented?
Second, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance as presented by Councilman Bratt, seconded by, who said it first?
You.
Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Welcome to Shenandoah.
Opposed?
Yes, sir.
That motion carries. Welcome to Shenandoah, Doc. We're gonna move on to item number 11, Preliminary Report in Public Hearing Regarding a Special Use Permit for Medical Services Restricted for 1500 Research Forest Drive, Suite 33, 235, Shenandoah, Texas.
Mayor and Council, again, another application for use permit for medical service restricted. This one for Health Source Chiro, which is a chiropractic office that is looking at the suite 235 in the 1500 Research Forest Drive facility. Again, Planning and Zoning reviewed this application at their meeting and do recommend approval of the special use permit.
Thank you, Jackie. We're gonna open up a public hearing on this item at 7:19. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Yes, please approach to your podium.
Hello.
All right.
We are Nick and Valerie Tran. We are not doctors, but we are business professionals requesting this permit. And we're here to answer any questions that y'all may have.
So I served 13 years in the U.S. Army as a combat medic, served multiple tours, and, you know, wearing body armor and doing the stuff that we do, we have back issues, and chiropractic care has helped me quite a bit. We want to offer the same service to the citizens of Shenandoah. First responders, veterans are very near and dear to my heart, so we want to make sure we take care of them with, with heavy discounts, but also we'll go to our families who lost members in service and military spouses. So this is something that we want to offer to the city. We, as a medic, I believe, taking care of the, the cause over just taking care of the symptoms is important, so we want to make sure that we offer that to, to everybody.
On a personal note, I was in the U.S. Army Infantry, Airborne Infantry, and we appreciate the heck out of our docs.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service, Dr. McLeod.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. We're gonna close this public hearing at 7:20. We're gonna move on to item number 12, Discussion on Possible Action to Adopt the Following Ordinance. In ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, granting a special use permit for medical, for medical services restricted for Health Source Chiro located at 1500 Research Forest Drive, Suite 235, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violations thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion on this?
Move that we approve the special use permit for Health Source Chiro as requested.
Second, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Fletcher, and seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Welcome to Shenandoah.
Glad to have you.
We're gonna move on to item number 13, Preliminary Report in Public Hearing Regarding a Special Use Permit for Mixed Beverage On-Premise Permit for Adriata Cafe Italian Grill located at 17825, Interstate Highway 45, Shenandoah, Texas.
Mayor and Council, for consideration, is a mixed beverage on-premise permit for Adriata Cafe located at the address read in the agenda. I will note that the request does not include late hours, and the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the mixed use on-premise permit without late hours.
Thank you, Kathy. We're gonna open up a public hearing at 7:21, correction, 7:22. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? No one. We're gonna close the public hearing at 7:22 and move on to item number 13, correction, 14, Discussion on Possible Action to Adopt the Following Ordinance. In ordinance of the city of Shenandoah, Texas amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, so as to a special use permit for mixed beverage permit without late hours for Adriata Cafe Italian Grill located at 17825 Interstate Highway 45, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 for violation thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion on this?
Motion approved.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman McLeod, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion?
Just to note again, this is without late hours.
Without late hours. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item number 15, Discussion on Possible Action to Adopt the Following Ordinance. In ordinance of the city of Shenandoah amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102, so to approve an extension of a special use permit for a mixed beverage permit without late hours for Gloria's Latin Cuisine located at 18484 Interstate Highway 45, Shenandoah, Texas, providing for a penalty in the amount of $2,000 or for violations thereof, providing severability and providing for an effective date. Do we have a motion on this?
Most do approve the extension.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the extension by Councilman Bratt, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion?
I will add, Planning and Zoning did review this request as well, and recommends approval of the extension.
We didn't mean to leave you out.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Yeah.
Item number 16.
Do you want to point, one thing, comment on that letter in here from Gloria's, for those asking, says, we're expecting to open in January 24th, so.
Oh, good.
I've gotten that question, so it's nice to see you.
Great, thank you for that. Item number 17, Discussion on Possible Action to Adopt the Following Resolution. A resolution of the city council, of the city of Shenandoah.
Let's get 16.
I'm sorry. Okay, yes. A resolution does it in the Courier as the official newspaper for the city of Shenandoah, Texas.
It's a move.
I try to overlook this one, too.
We do this every year.
Yeah.
That's why, so, at least Lon's not here to vote against it.
As far as I know, they're still there as only daily print publication.
Only the motion?
I did.
You didn't? A second. Motion to approve of Councilman Bratt, seconded by Councilman Pollard. Any discussion?
Yeah, maybe we next time, instead of saying it's in the best interest of the city, we just say, it's unfortunately the only paper that meets the requirements.
Was this not gonna be addressed by the legislature at some point?
Well, they, they keep saying they're going to, and of course, then they get hung up on doing random other stuff that doesn't, you know, so. Yeah, it would just be really, really nice for anybody that might be listening, if the state would let us post up to the internet, you know, get up with the 21st century, instead of having to rely on somebody that's spending a bunch of taxpayer dollars publishing something, we could just stick it on the website.
The daily newspaper lobby would be disappointed to hear that from you.
Yeah, well, you know, it saves taxpayer dollars, and it's more efficient, and it lets more bidders access, so.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
We got three and one. Motion carries. Seventeen, Discussion on Possible Action to Adopt the Following Resolution. A resolution of the city council of the city of Shenandoah, Texas appointing members to the board of directors of the Shenandoah Municipal Development District.
Just some background on this, so the terms for directors, Raymaker, Wallace, and Fletcher have expired, and the resolution that you find attached to the Agenda Pack is to reappoint them to the MDD Board of Directors, and they are eligible to continue, continue serving.
We have a motion. Have a motion to approve those three?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the three by Councilman Pollard, seconded by Councilman McLeod.
So, did.
Discussion.
Did President Beavers make the recommendation of these three? I didn't get it from the text, that's why I'm asking.
I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to ask on that one. I saw it, too, and I'm stepping in here, Kathy had to go and sick, but I'm.
Because my understanding was Beavers would make the recommendation, and we would vote on it.
I just, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I believe that's the case.
Okay. I'd.
I don't know.
It's not listed on there.
Usually it says specifically, these were recommended, so.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
Abstaining. The motion carries. Item 18, Discussion on Possible Action to, Possible Action to Adopt the Following Resolution. Resolution submitting nominees as candidates for the election of the Montgomery County Central Appraisal District's Board of Directors for 2024 through 2025 term.
Since he's not here, I'm gonna nominate Ron Raymaker.
I think that's a great idea.
Second.
So he can continue.
We have, we have, we have a motion to nominate Councilman Raymaker to the, to the MCAD Board for 2024. We have a motion to nominate Constable Raymaker to the, to the MCAD Board for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I understand that he volunteered for that position.
Yes.
It's a good thing for him.
He felt bad. He would serve us well.
Yes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nineteen. Discussion on possible action to approve contract renewal for city engineering services.
Council, this is more or less a routine thing. We have not renewed the Blau Engineering contract in a few years. I have reviewed it. It is the same contract that we have used. We did change section six point one point three because I didn't think that wording was clear. Also, there was a change in the monthly retainer and the hourly rates. Other than that, the contract is, is, it's good and it's the same one that we've been operating under.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Constable Broad, seconded by Constable Fletcher. Any discussion?
This is really a no-brainer, I think, for the city.
Absolutely.
The amount of work that Blau Engineering does for the city and not just the amount of work, but the above and beyond attitude that, not that he just takes, but his whole staff takes when they approach doing the work for the city is, we're very fortunate to be able to have a relationship with Blau Engineering and his staff. No doubt about that, so.
You're here without question. Any additional comments?
Do you have a question?
Or discussion?
No, no, I said without a question. I have been, I have talked to other engineers that have talked to me, saying, what do you think about bidding for Shenandoah? And who do you have? And I'd say Blau Engineering, and it's, oh, we'll back away. They're as good as you get. And I've heard that from more than one other professionals. And when I first got on the council, I questioned, I said, God, why do we have the same company year after year? Don't we need some fresh blood and a fresh look at this? But man, after getting involved and seeing all the things that Blau does and how expansive his company is and how tied they are to our community and to Montgomery County, there's no way we could consider, I would ever consider, anyone else as long as they have the certain, the same people that they have. I think a vote of confidence for them is certainly warranted. We love them.
In agreement.
And Yoma won't give a speech.
Yeah, I would agree with that, having witnessed some other projects. And particularly, I would, I would say that project management has been just absolutely fantastic. So when you've been allowed to manage projects, it turned out amazing.
Yeah, I can't imagine having anyone else with a font of information about the Blau's history with the city and all the projects that they've handled. That is, like Ted said, that's, that's a no-brainer.
Aggie Lynn did him well, so.
That's right. And he's an Aggie.
We'll hold that against them.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. We're going to table item number twenty for a future council meeting. And skip over to item twenty-one. Discussion on possible action to approve funding of the one hundred eighty-day balance for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Mayor and Council, this is a recurring item. At the end of every budget cycle, we have to replenish the one hundred eighty-day reserve balance for general fund that was adopted in policy in August of twenty twenty. So as you'll see in the agenda items, the figures to cover the general fund operating reserves, one hundred eighty days, and that would be four hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents.
What was our total surplus for twenty-one, twenty-two?
I think it was eight ninety, eight ninety?
Yeah.
Around there.
Excellent.
We have a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Constable McCloud, seconded by Constable Fletcher. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two. Discussion on possible action to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget amendments.
Mayor and Council, as we discussed, I believe in a meeting in February about a new process with bringing budget amendments, what it, what we did in finances, we went through the whole year, and every time there was a motion made, we made note of that to bring it back at the end of the year. There's also some that were not council-approved in meeting, but they were staff level based on spending limit authorities. So what I did is I just kind of broke it down to three major funds. So general fund, there was a mid-year add for the admin assistant position, a staff promotion. We did a price adjustment on the RMS program project for some additional software, HVAC repairs, and then drainage improvements on Holly Hill. So typically, I didn't want them to actually hit the budget from the surplus unless it was a true recurrent expense. So you'll see the designation between a budget amendment and the available cash. So those items were approved. It's just kind of a transparency item at that point. When you move down to the water sewer, you'll see that the annual station cleaning. We did have a, our previous company had gone out of business, so it was a new contract that had been approved, and there was an increase to the pricing. The David Vetter ACP replacement project, the emergency water main break that happened in November, the commercial meter replacement that we discussed just a couple of months ago to replace three of our big commercial fail-in meters. TPDS permit renewal. Joseph could probably explain that more if you have questions. And then water meter antenna replacement. Unfortunately, with COVID, there's a lot of production delays, so we had to kind of scrounge to find what we could, and we bought what we could just to make sure we had them. And then for the CPV department, there is just the advertisement addition that was approved in council for the Texas Co-op Summer Program.
Got a question on the permit renewal. Is that going to be an ongoing expense?
So that happens every five years. And we, to be honest, we just missed it on this year with the changes we had on the budget software. I missed the note.
Okay. It was just a question based on the-
Yeah.
It's, that's a five-year.
Cash versus, I know it's eleven thousand dollars, really.
Mm-hmm.
And it's every five years, which makes it weird to budget annually for something every five years.
With our five-year projections, we'll have it on there.
There you go.
Yep.
Well, maybe I should clarify. So that permit renewal, that's the full price and that lasts for five years.
Right, right, yeah.
We do an annual report, which is a lot less. That's the big hitter every, every five years.
But again, once we get the five-year plan in place, we'll see it coming. It won't look like a outlier.
Yep.
Any additional discussion? We have a motion.
Oh, make a motion to approve.
Second. A motion to approve by Constable McCloud, seconded by Constable Pollard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three. Discussion on possible action to adopt minutes of the July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting and the August nine, twenty twenty-three budget workshop meeting.
I think a motion to be approved is read.
Well, a motion to be approved is read by Constable Broad.
Second.
Seconded by Constable Fletcher. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion on possible action to ratify the accounts payable for August twenty twenty-three. Motion?
Move that we approve.
Second. Motion to approve, Constable Fletcher, seconded by Constable Pollard. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Development updates.
Mayor, Council, just a few for you. On our residential construction side, the central neighborhood currently under construction by Bridge Tower Homes, they have their last eight homes under construction, and their estimated conclusion for their project is end of year. Boulevard Green, which is Pelican Builders, they have their last two homes under construction, and they're also shooting for end of this year, early next year. That'll, that'll close out our two open residential neighborhoods for construction. A couple of commercial updates for you. Ho Ho's Holiday Treasures will be opening a temporary Christmas store in the Portofino Shopping Center in the suite that was intended for Bye Bye Baby, the Suite one-ten. They received their certificate of occupancy this week, and they are hoping to open early October. She did send some links over to me for their Facebook and Instagram, which we will get over to our social media sites to, to share. Planning and zoning commission or assigned committee reviewed some sign exceptions for Lifetime to include some of their signage to their, their product interior, to their building, their, their live work, their cafe, their spa, and their beach club operations for that facility. Lifetime is looking at opening fall of this year, so we're anticipating that opening really soon.
Thank you, Jackie. Civic Club updates?
Charlie said to give his regrets tonight, but he is with his son at a homecoming parade. This time of year starts our new events for the coming year. Our calendar has just arrived this week, so we've got calendars to start giving out. And our first event that's coming up, and that is going to be Monday at the National Night Out, six to eight at the park. That is done by our police department to give our residents a chance to meet all the first responders that work for us in this area. The next event after that is a new event for us. It is going to be on October twenty-eighth, and it is called Fall into Fun, which is replacing the old Halloween safe streets. It's got a different format, lots of kids' activities and events, and we're really excited on that. And it will be on the twenty-eighth, six to eight at the park. Another event that's happening tomorrow night is not actually a city event, but we are hosting it here in the community room. Thanks to the Escados and Charlie Bommer, we've got a workshop on cybersecurity, how to keep yourself safe. So those three events are coming up in the next few weeks.
What time is that cyber?
That one starts at six thirty in the community room here.
For two hours?
An hour and a half, I think, is what he's planning, and then question and answers. Any other things I can talk to y'all about?
I will tell you, everybody in Shenandoah's, my neighborhood is, is planning to attend. I have a lot of folks.
Thank you. City attorney updates?
I do have one tonight, and I really hate to have to say this one because it is the application of the City of Shenandoah and Old Hamlet Water Supply for the transfer of the certificates of convenience and necessity being handled by Blau Engineering. The administrative law judge has approved everything now, and we have a deadline for any party to request a hearing of November the sixth. And assuming no party requests a hearing, the one hundred and twenty-day deadline for the commission to approve the sale will be December twentieth. So we are, with the help of Blau Engineering, right on schedule. We had looked at this three hundred day window, and I think we're going to beat it by sixty days or so. I really don't expect the Public Utility Commission that close to Christmas to act before the first of January. But that part of the project is, is just barely, but it is ahead of schedule.
That's great. Great news. Thank you. City administrative updates?
Just have two updates. One, I'm sure all of you noticed, probably Friday, Friday evening, about five thirty, maybe some low water pressure. So we did have one of our sixteen-inch lines blow unexpectedly right there on Vision Park. We're able to, I was actually still around, so I was able to get there really quick. But we're able to respond quickly and get that leak isolated. The system worked as it should. The other, the other wells turned on, booster pumps running, so we were able to maintain not our normal sixty-five PSI, but we were able to maintain safe water pressures throughout that incident until we were able to get isolated, and it has been repaired.
What is that pipe? Is that PVC or is it?
It is C nine hundred.
Isn't it just the ground shifting at that?
Well, of course, every time that happens, you, you try to do a little investigation.
That's all I have.
We're not exactly sure. We, we think it might be pressure-related. This is an area we've had trouble with before. We've done some pressure tests recently in that area. We did notice this section of pipe. It's sitting on hardened stabilized sand. Now, there could have been sand bedding around that, but everything gets blown away when the pipe blows. But we think maybe with that, that hard rocky bed that it's on, you know, when the water pipe bounces in use, it, it could have weakened it and caused this leak. Not a hundred percent sure, but we're, we're, we're looking at methods to, because this is not the first time this section is broken.
So we're looking at a remedy of some sort?
Yes. My second update is over there at Home Depot. If you've been to Home Depot, you may have noticed a new driveway cut to Alexander Drive. So that was, if you recall, we, city recently acquired, acquired easements from Kite Realty. So just wanted to give you an update on that. And if anyone's asking about why hasn't it opened yet, we're still working on the final component with Home Depot. City, we are able to complete the part in the easement, but the rest of the improvements need to be done on Home Depot property, which we can't do. We already are in conversations with both corporate and our local manager about getting that wrapped up. I'll tell you this, the manager is very excited and has said that a lot of customers have asked, when is that going to be open? So definitely a good move. And that's all I have.
That's it? Thank you. I'm going to move on to item twenty-nine, council inquiry.
I'm good this evening.
Me, too. I'm good. I'm great tonight.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on to executive session. According to Texas Open Meeting Act, Chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code is followed. Texas Government five five one point zero eight seven deliberation regarding economic development, ETJ discussion, IDC application, developers agreements, and David Memorial Drive. We are going to break for that at seven forty-seven, and we'll resume once we complete executive session. 7:47, and we'll resume once we complete executive session.
Did I throw you out loud?
No, we cleared.
All right, we're going to resume our council session. Executive session ended at nine, 8:49. No action taken. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the developers' agreement that Bill's going to read.
Yes, it will be a developers' agreement with DC Business Loans LLC. The city will sell parcel R47283 to DC for the sum of $283,420. The property will be conveyed by special warranty deed and sold as is. DC will purchase a title policy at DC's expense. Any required survey will be at DC's expense. Closing will occur within 30 days. Two, honor before closing, DC will file its request to annex all its parcels into the city. Three, the city shall approve the annexation of the DC parcels into the city within 30 days after receipt of the annex application. One annexed, once annexed into the city, DC will apply for one of the following zoning designations: retail commercial, office commercial, light industrial, or moderate industrial for the DC parcels, and the city will approve such zoning designation within 60 days. Four, under no circumstances will DC or any successor of DC file a zoning application seeking zoning for multifamily housing. Five, simultaneous to the annexation of the DC parcels, the city agrees to approve a curb cut on David Memorial Drive for construction access to the DC parcels and to approve a commercial curb cut and driveway on David Memorial for access to the DC parcels. And last, six, DC will grant the easements on Exhibit A or Water and Sewer to the city.
Second.
Motion as approved, as read.
We have a. We have a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve, the agreement is read, seconded by Councilman Fletcher. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right, we're going to adjourn the session of the Shenandoah City Council at 8:52.